All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome.
Recording in progress.
I would like to call to order the City Council Budget Hearing of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Prospect Heights, being held today, Monday, April 24, 2023, at 6:45 PM. We are in person at the City Council Chambers at Prospect Heights City Hall, located at 8 North Elmhurst Road in Prospect Heights, Illinois. I am Acting Mayor Matthew Dolick. Could we begin with a roll call to establish the quorum, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Aldman Cameron?
Here.
Aldman Lovickson?
Here.
Aldman Morgan Adams?
Here.
Aldman Dash?
Here.
Mayor Dolick?
Here. We do have all five present. Next item is comments from the public on non-agenda matters. Is there anyone who has any comments to make? There being none, I would ask for a motion to open the public hearing regarding the fiscal year 2023/24 budget.
So move, Morgan Adams?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Could I have a roll call, please?
Aldman Dolick?
Aye.
I'm sorry, Mayor Dolick. Aldman Dash?
Here.
Aldman Morgan Adams?
Yes.
Aldman Lovickson?
Here.
Aldman Cameron?
Here.
I take that those are all yeses?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm sorry, just for the record. So that motion passes 5-0. The purpose of the public hearing is receiving comments from the public on the proposed budget. Budget was prepared in tentative form and made conveniently available to the public for at least 10 days prior to tonight's meeting. Notice of the hearing was published in the Daily Herald on April 13. The tentative budget includes information about the city's anticipated receipts and expenditures for the fiscal year. At this time, are there any public comments regarding the budget? Has anyone registered?
No.
All right. Is there any comment from the City Council regarding the budget? There being none, could I have a motion to close the public hearing regarding the fiscal year 2022/23 budget?
23/24 budget?
Yes, that I... correction, yeah, that should be the fiscal year 2023/24 budget.
So move?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. If there are no comments regarding the budget, could I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Dolick?
Aye.
Aldman Cameron?
Aye.
Aldman Lovickson?
Aye.
Aldman Morgan Adams?
Aye.
Aldman Dash?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Could I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll make that motion. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone. All right, it is 7:00 PM. We can go ahead and get started. Deputy Clerk Schulteis, would you read the preamble for us, please?
Yes, thank you.
In accordance with the applicable statutes of the State of Illinois, ordinances of the City of Prospect Heights, notice is hereby given that the City Council meeting of the Mayor and the City Council of the City of Prospect Heights is being held on Monday, April 24, 2023, at 7:00 PM, in person in the City Council Chambers, Prospect Heights City Hall, 8 North Elmhurst Road, Prospect Heights, Illinois, and simulcast on Zoom, Acting Mayor Matthew Dolick presiding. This meeting will be broadcast live on cable channels, Comcast and Astound, RCN Channel 17, and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99. It will also be recorded and televised on Comcast and Astound, RCN Channel 17, and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99. Attendees who wish to speak on agenda or non-agenda items will be provided an opportunity during the meeting. There will be a five-minute time limit for speakers.
All right, thank you. Then at this time, I am calling to order the City Council meeting being held today, Monday, April 24, 2023, at 7:00 PM. We are in person in the City Council Chambers, Prospect Heights City Hall, located at 8 North Elmhurst Road, Prospect Heights, Illinois. Deputy Clerk, could we have a roll call to establish a quorum, please?
Yes, thank you. Mayor Dolick?
Here.
Aldman Lovickson?
Here.
Aldman Dash?
Here.
Aldman Cameron?
Here.
Aldman Morgan Adams?
Here.
We do have all five present. Could we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
The two of the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. The first item is the approval of minutes. Could I have a motion to approve the April 10, 2023, City Council Regular Meeting Minutes?
So move?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any corrections or discussion? There being none, could I have a roll call, please?
Aldman Morgan Adams?
Aye.
Aldman Cameron?
Aye.
Aldman Dash?
Aye.
Aldman Lovickson?
Aye.
Mayor Dolick?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Next item is Presentations. Tonight, we do have the Willow Road Design Progress Presentation by City Engineer Dan Strahan.
Thank you, Mayor Dolick. Glad to be with you tonight, providing an update on Willow, Owen, design progress. We have reached about 60% plateau for design in terms of plan development. And so we wanted to come here, share some design details, and provide an update on the design progress to be... Here's where we're headed tonight. I know this is a project that's come out quite a bit in the past, so we need to touch on the background of the project, talk about our hydraulic study and calculations that went into the design. We talked about our compensatory storage that's proposed for the project, and provide a project status update and schedule for the remainder of design as we head towards construction, and maintenance of traffic as those two things are interrelated. So as many of you know, this is a project that dates back about 2013. MWRD completed countywide stormwater studies, and this is one of, I believe, 41 projects that was identified in those countywide studies to raise the elevation of Willow Road. As the project was developed, it was expanded initially to include both Hillcrest and Owen. As that design development proceeded along, Hillcrest was removed from the scope, and we now have the scope of simply Owen and Willow. The reason for the project is on the screen in front of you, Willow Road overtops about a two-year flood event, with significant overtopping above six inches at the five-year flood event. Owen Street overtops at events even more frequent than that. So before I continue, I wanted to take a brief sidebar to talk about storm events, because my profession often uses the terminology two-year event, ten-year event, 100-year event, and it can create a bit of confusion, so I wanted to touch on that briefly. We'll often use the term 100-year storm event, and what we really mean is a 1% annual chance event. So we don't mean to imply that it's an event that happens every 100 years, but in any given year, it has about a 1% annual chance of occurring. And so, just like the stock market, past performance is not an indicator of future results. And so if you have a 1% annual chance storm in one year, you still have that 1% chance of having it again the next year. So the project's objective is, in this case, Willow Road, we've developed the design criteria along with the Cook County Department of Transportation and Highways, to elevate Willow Road to 652.1. That's the 100-year floodplain elevation or the elevation the floodplain reaches during that 1% annual chance storm. We are elevating Owen Road's centerline to the 10-year floodplain elevation of 651. And in both cases, it's elevating the road anywhere from two to three feet above the existing centerline. When the initial preliminary design that was completed by the MWRD over the last, over about a five-year period culminating in 2018, was completed, the design elevation was actually 653. In our conversations with Cook County, we've done a lot of hydraulic modeling to determine what the upstream design impacts would be. One of the things that we discovered is with the elevation of 653, the 100-year storm event, when it affects the road, would be elevated upstream by about 1/100 of a foot, which is about an eighth of an inch, which is not much at all. Cook County wanted to make sure that we also checked larger storm events, so we actually ran the model for the 500-year storm event, which is the 0.2% annual chance storm. And we did find a slightly larger impact, about 0.11 feet, a little over an inch and a fourth. And so the county was concerned with that, and that really led to the decision to reduce that elevation increase from 653 down to 652.1. So the most recent construction estimate we have is 2.6 million for the project, including design and construction engineering. The total project cost is approximately $3 million. We've... Funding commitments for the project include Cook County contribution of $817,000 and the MWRD contribution of 1.8 million. The City of Prospect Heights would be contributing about $300,000 to the project. And that would be funded through Rebuild Illinois Funds. So this slide gets into some of the engineering technical detail of it. On the bottom is a plan view. The gray area is the area of the road that's being elevated, so that portion of the road is being reconstructed. As you can see, there's a short section on Hillcrest and a short section on Hillside that also needs to be elevated so that we can have a smooth transition to those two roads. Let's see. The honeycomb pattern just beyond the gray, the solid gray area indicates resurfacing, so instead of just leaving it kind of mid-block, leaving the roadway improvements in the middle of the block, we're going to resurface the road to the next intersection, which is Maple Street on the west side and Owen Street on the east side. The slide shows a typical cross section at the top as well, and these design details are pretty much unchanged from the Phase 1 design. You can see there's 11-foot travelings, six-foot paved shoulders, guardrail on both sides of the road, and a four-to-one slope back down to existing conditions. You can see in the middle of the plan view, there's a pretty significant culvert crossing there. From a stormwater perspective, we have to actually accommodate the capacity of the water that overtops the roadway right now. And so that leads to some very big culverts. That crossing has five 60-inch culverts to make that happen without increases in flood elevations upstream. And then this is the same two photos, or the same two drawings for Owen Court. Again, the gray area is the area that's being reconstructed as that elevation is rising. The cul-de-sac is already above an elevation of 651.0, so we would just be resurfacing the cul-de-sac portion of the roadway. In terms of the cross section that's shown there, for Owen Court, we have 10-foot travelings, two-foot paved shoulders, a guardrail on the lake side of the road, and then three-to-one side slopes going down to existing conditions. And those side slopes were adjusted during the final design to try and minimize the amount of fill that we had in the floodplain. So this was maybe the biggest challenge that we had during the design process, is finding a place for compensatory storage. So what the stormwater ordinance requires is that when fill is placed in the floodplain, a similar amount plus a safety factor has to be removed from the floodplain. So in this case, elevating Willow Road and Owen Court results in about 2,800 cubic yards of fill below the regulatory floodplain elevation. And then the WMO requires an additional 10% factor of safety. So this is equivalent to about 250 truckloads of material that we have to remove from the floodplain somewhere else. And so it's no easy task to find a good spot for that. So during Phase 1, several different locations were explored, some around and adjacent to the lake, other locations were a little further upstream. But the Phase 1 process did not conclude with a definitive location for the cap storage. A few locations were explored, and the property owners were able to come to an agreement with property owners. So we went back to the drawing board last year, and as the council knows, we were able to reach agreements with our Redeemer Lutheran Church and the Prospect Heights Park District for this open-spaced land near McDonald Creek, near the intersection of Palatine Road and Schoenbeck Road. So this is the plan view of that area. Not quite as illustrative of the aerial photo, so I kind of go with that one. As we're working with the church, the church is also going to allow us to use a portion of the parking lot, the construction access, and staging, so we're going to be resurfacing that portion of the parking lot. So I'll jump ahead a little bit to talk about schedule, because it'll actually tie back into the final design topic, which is maintenance of traffic. So in late March of this year, we submitted the 60% set, and then followed up with the formal permits middlest to Cook County, to MWRD, and then last week, to the US Army Corps for the wetland impact permit for this project. We had a Designs Progress meeting with Cook County and MWRD last week, and they expressed some concerns about the aggressiveness of our schedule. They wanted to make sure they had enough time to fully review the plans, get back to us, and make sure we're kind of crossing all the Ts and dotting the Is for the final design details. So we revised the final schedule a little bit since we initially had a target of an early June completion date, or, I'm sorry, an early June letting date. So the next steps, we want to finalize easements with the Park District and with the church within the coming month. May of 2023, we'd submitted a 98% plan and specification submittal to the respective agencies for review. And then July 2023, we'd want to make that 100% submittal and get the project out to bid. We show an interim completion date of mid-November 2023, so we would start construction this fall, and then pause over the winter and finalize construction in June of 2024. So you may be wondering, why would we do that? Why would we start construction and then pause it over the winter? The reason for that is something that came up during that Phase 1 engineering process with MWRD. So the MWRD did a lot of geotechnical study to determine how best to build up the roadway on Willow Road. As you can imagine, since the road is basically crossing a wetland area, the soils are very poor along the area that we're trying to raise. And so the MWRD's consultant looked at a few different techniques to try and address that. They considered the possibility of removing all of the organic soils and replacing them. That was cost prohibitive. They looked at drilled piers, also would be cost prohibitive. So the recommended approach from the Phase 1 study was to place approximately five feet of surcharge loading, of basically additional material on the road, leave it in place for six to nine months, allow that consolidation and settlement to occur, and then remove it and complete construction of the roadway. So that's the design approach that we're suggesting here. As you can see in the profile view here, we would place about five feet of fill over the top of Willow Road, not the constructed pavement, but the actual subgrade. We will leave that in place from this November through early April next year. That would allow for that settlement to occur. And then again, April 2024 through June 2024 would be that final construction phase, completing construction, removing the excess fill, and completing the roadway. So in terms of maintenance of traffic, when that surcharge fill is being placed this fall, we would anticipate a full closure of Willow Road. We would have some detour signage in place to get people around the construction zone, and obviously, local traffic could maintain access to their homes, but the roadway itself would be blocked where that fill was being placed. Over the winter, we would maintain that detour signage and allow local roads or local traffic to access Willow Road in each direction. And then during the final construction phase, we would anticipate periodic closures on Willow and Lane closures on Owen Court. So hopefully, that wasn't too much in the weeds, but if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
So I'm curious. So I actually just did this for a project with a surcharge. I was able to use a topsoil stockpile, right? So I guess I'm curious, though, where are you placing the fill? Is it along the sides of the road? I mean, if you're keeping the road open, where... I guess I'm confused on where you're placing the fill.
So we would anticipate removing the pavement itself, just the HMA. Placing, it's probably going to be like an aggregate fill, like a CA6 material, to that depth of five feet, compacting it, and then you basically have just a gravel road over the construction area.
Okay. So the road, then, while your, while the surcharge is occurring, is going to be gravel?
Correct.
Okay, so it will not be paved?
It will not be paved, correct.
That's what I was trying to figure out.
So I just had a quick question. So during that time period that is just gravel, that will be during that winter time period?
It will.
Okay. Does there... I'm assuming that would cause problem with any snow removal? How...
It is a county road. There may be times where the road is just closed through that section, depending on what goes on. Obviously, plowing gravel is different than plowing our street. It's hard to reach bare pavement when it's not there.
Right.
But the amount of load that's being placed on the road to weight it down, basically, timing-wise, least impact, it's a big project, but it's a required thing. So I think there'll be a lot of times where the road is inaccessible between Owen and Maple.
Okay.
So residents still will have access. There's no driveways that will be directly affected by that, except for a fellow right at the end of that school shed right there?
Hillside?
Hillside.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else have any questions for Mr. Strahan?
Yes. You said the compensatory storage was about 2,200 cubic yards plus 10%?
2,800 plus 10%.
So you're showing like about 4,500 in the project?
I'm sorry.
You're showing about 4,500.
So I'm sorry, the fill in the floodplain was about 2,800 cubic yards.
Oh, okay.
And then the compensatory storage, we do have some surplus. So those are, those were kind of concept numbers. We've refined those numbers a bit. But we, in talking with staff, we did think there was value in providing a little surplus, because that just benefits all the, any flood areas along the town.
Is that measurable in any way, that you're able to upstream?
It's hard to measure, but it's there. It's having the extra floodplain volume there. So if we're there, we can carve out, you know, what we can, what we can.
Even as much as you can with that, the portion of the land that you can put the compensatory storage in, you're maximizing it?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Does anyone else have any questions?
Hey, one more question. You don't show, you don't show, is there enough room for a sidewalk along that area once... You're showing two feet on either side beyond the road, correct?
Talking about Owen or Willow?
Willow.
So Willow has a lot of the 11-foot travel in either direction, so 22-foot edge-to-edge, and then a six-foot paved shoulder on either side.
Okay.
So not a sidewalk per se, but certainly walkable.
Right, okay. Thank you.
All right, anyone else? All right, thank you very much for your presentation. We do appreciate it. This evening, there are no appointments or confirmations. This brings us to public comment on agenda matters. I do have a couple of people registered in subject. Okay, so you have no further comments. Okay, thank you, sir. John, can you help me with your last name?
Yes, John Kamen.
Thank you very much. If you could just state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, John Kamen. Good evening. I'm 408 Hillcrest Drive, right there on the lake. Questions I had about the shoulder. There's a six-foot shoulder on each side.
Of Willow.
Of Willow, okay. So there's a lot of parking that goes on off the side of Willow Road currently. And so is that, will that be open to additional parking once the new road is in? Or is there some other plan for parking over there? A lot of people go over there and fish and things like that. So I was wondering if there's any thought process put in on that.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, if that's it, I'll have him address those. If you have any further items you want to discuss, I'm going to have you finish.
Okay. So one would be the parking that's going on at Willow Road right now. And then two, I've heard talk of opening Hillcrest Drive up to public parking. Right now, that's prohibited. It hasn't been that way for a long time. So I was wondering if there's any, is there a plan for that or not? I just kind of heard it as word of mouth in the neighborhood. And then lastly, one other thing would be any, any thought about the speed limit on the new road? Right now, that stretch between 83 and Wheeling Road can become a little bit of a drag strip. And so if there's any talk about maybe a stop sign or a speed bump or something to slow traffic down over there, there is a lot of foot traffic that I'd hate to see someone get hurt. That's it.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. Mr. Strahan, if you would address his first questions about parking, and then we'll move to his last item.
So one of the things that we're looking at, as I mentioned, there's a six-foot paved shoulder, there's a guardrail, probably kind of sits out on like a two-foot paved area. One of the design details that we're kind of finalizing is where that guardrail ends. And so what I'm hopeful we can do is, if you can see the cursor here, I'm hopeful to end the guardrail kind of in here, in this area right across from Hillside. If we can do that, I want to widen out the shoulder just beyond that, just to make it quick and provide a full nine feet. And then you basically have a kind of a parking paved shoulder area for some length as we get east of Hillside. So that's one of the design details that I'm going to try and finalize.
Do you think the county will approve that?
We talked to the county about it and stated that there is parking out there now in the form of kind of a wider gravel shoulder. They seemed receptive to the idea. We'd have to demonstrate that the guardrail is ending at an appropriate location.
All right, thank you. The last item that was brought up... Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I was going to say he could probably address the speed.
I can address the speed. It is a 30 mile an hour road.
I was just going to ask what are the...
And at this time, there's no talk or plans to change that. It is a It is a county, it's a connecting roadway, and there's no, there's no talk about any stop signs or anything else changing with the roadway, just raising it up to take care of the flooding issue. But it is a thirty, so.
Okay. Thank you, that answers my question.
Any changes would be jurisdictioned by the county, though. That wouldn't be up to prospect heights.
Absolutely.
Right, so it's not, it's not under our jurisdiction to, to make those changes.
Right, that's a good point. All right, thank you very much. Does anyone else, those are the only two.
I think there was one other issue about the public parking.
Is that going to be opened up for parking, or is that going to stay the way it is?
So I can respond to that. Yes, there's been talk for years, back from the, making the lake and the slough more access to all the residents in the city. At this point, there is no plan that we're moving forward on and changing the parking restrictions, but it is still a topic that will be addressed down the road. Started with the Rosenthal Plan and quite a few other requests for improved parking. But as we work for, towards this Willow Road reconstruction, we're not changing anything at this point. We're gonna, let's get through this, let's make sure everything works the way we want. We have existing parking that will be reutilized, as Dan talked about with the work with county. But eventually, that will be addressed again, because we have residents requiring it, well, not requiring it, requesting access to the lake. So that they've gone there, they have very difficult times parking, they have to park on Willow to walk around to the other side, they're parking on side streets. We've had residents that are just a block away, wondering why people are parking in front of their house when they should be parking around the lake. So that will, it will be, it will come up as a topic, just not in the near future, not while we work through this process.
All right, thank you, Mark. Does that, I think that addresses your concerns. All right, thank you.
One more quick question for Dan. How far would you, would you be able to go, the distance where you're repaving on the east, all the way down to where you're repaving? When you talk about widening that for parking, or you talk about just the part that you're raising?
Sure, yeah, I guess it depends on how far, how far we, again, where the guardrail terminates is kind of the critical factor here.
But then how far east would you go?
How far east, we would extend that at least to the end of the reconstruction, so the end of the solid grade here.
Thank you. Owen, Owen comes through about here. The process of the roadway takes us to about here. There's two parcels of property right here, there's quite a bit gravel bump that are typically parked on. So this is the projected portion here where the shoulder would be, it's existing, it would be expanded a little bit more to make it more convenient. So that's what we'll look at.
All right, thank you. Yes, sir. If you, you want to speak on, on agenda items? If you just step to the podium and just state your name and address for the record, and then proceed.
Richard Solberg at 406 Owen Court. Okay. Will there be a process of the construction resettling over Owen Street or Owen Court over winter, or is that just for Willow Road?
Mr. Strahan?
So yeah, the, the surcharge loading is.
Sure.
The surcharge loading is specific to Willow Road based on the soils that were found there. We did not, sorry, we, the MWRD's consultant did not find similar soil issues on Owen Court, slightly better soils there, so did not believe that that was required for Owen.
Okay.
Okay, and then during the construction on Owen, that Owen section, how will we get in and out of the court when the road is, is under full construction?
So the intent on Owen is to basically construct it one lane at a time. And so during construction, there will be times where there may be one lane of access, but we are going to direct the contractor to maintain access at all times.
Okay.
Could the access be in the form, though, of gravel road and not necessarily a paved surface?
Absolutely.
Yeah, so we should set that expectation.
Correct.
Okay, my last question is the compensatory storage area. Is it correct that that's upstream of the Hillcrest Lake, or is it downstream of the Hillcrest Lake? And would that, would that affect the frequency of flooding if it was upstream or downstream? In other words, like if it was upstream, would the excess water normally just go to that compensatory area and stay there until it dries up? Or how would that add, how would that play out?
So Hillcrest Lake is, is part of a tributary to McDonald Creek. So the compensatory storage area is located upstream along McDonald Creek. The flood elevations in Hillcrest Lake are actually more a function of the elevation on McDonald Creek as opposed to the tributary itself. So you can kind of think of it, McDonald Creek kind of backflows into tributary and into Hillcrest Lake to provide those higher flood elevations. So yeah, so the, having the compensatory storage upstream allows a little more benefit between the project area and all the way upstream towards being provided. If it were downstream, obviously, there'd be an area that just has fill and nothing compensating for it.
So the flood typically comes backing up from, from the exit of the creek, not from?
That's where the higher elevation is.
Correct.
All right, thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak? Yes, ma'am. Yes, if you would, just come up to the podium and again, just state your name and address for the record.
My name is Sherry Christian, my address is 207 East Willow Road. I just want to double check, make sure I'm clear. My neighbor 209 is right next to me. So is this the parking that you're talking about, is that going to be in front of our home, right before, right before you get to Owen?
So the intent would, it would be on the north side of the road.
The north side, right, not, not our, not right in front of our house, but it would be across the street?
Correct.
And we'll still be able to get to our driveways?
Yes, that's, that's going to be a design, kind of a design requirement is to make sure you can get in and out.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Yes, sir, go ahead.
Tim Kupchak, got one question regarding increasing the culverts from walls that aren't existent, when now you know they're pretty well blocked entirely, to five, five-foot tall culverts. We've always had issues with silt flow into Hillside Lake, Hillcrest Lake, and it's, the lake is kind of shallow, very shallow. By putting in all these culverts, has there been any studies to see the impact of the silt flowing to the lake in advance, going to make the lake even shallower?
So the, the culverts themselves, I don't think would have an impact one way or the other. I think the, you know, sedimentation that occurs over time is more a function of just the watershed and where sediment may be coming from. Yeah, so the, having a larger culvert there really is more a, more hydraulic requirement based on, you know, what's necessary to prevent upstream issues from raising the road up. Without a larger culvert, basically, you're blocking the flow from upstream, and so a large culvert is needed to maintain those floodplain elevations upstream.
I just have one question.
Yeah, go ahead.
The, the flow upstream to the compensatory storage areas is not going to create any issue for the, for the area in that, near it, is not going to cause any flooding or any problems there?
No, again, having it upstream of the project area just benefits a little larger area than if it were right at the project area.
You said you had one more question, sir.
Real quick, yeah, so, so your answer is there haven't been any studies to see any impact of additional soil. Like years ago, the city engineer came out and, a lot of years ago, when they first took over the lake, and he said that we needed to have dredgeheads at the edge of the culvert on the lakeside, so it could be dredged out occasionally and, and with like a sump, and then we could just scoop it out, and then we wouldn't have any silt coming in the lake. And the other question I have to do with the multimillion dollar countryside flood project that was just implemented, or is it in process of being implemented? Is there any impact of that since those floodwaters are now coming upstream through the slough and through Hillcrest Lake and then upstream, you know, the tailwaters of Camp McDonald Creek? Is there any impact of that on our flood situation, the present and the slough?
So with regard to the Arlington Countryside Project, no, I mean, the, the project is essentially pumping water to someplace that it goes through, through a separate storm source system currently now. So the water eventually reaches that same point in McDonald Creek, McDonald Creek tributary, I should say, and it's now being pumped in a slightly different line than it did at the same location.
Except now it's coming through the lake, it never came through the lake before. It came through a separate source.
I believe that's correct.
Dan, I could, so I'll wrap up. The Arlington Countryside Project, the same water is going to the same place. It came through from Arlington Countryside, through underneath where the Speedway gas station is, down through Brandon Berry Apartments, and down a pipe that goes Camp McDonald Road down to Eisenhower School. The new pipe that we put in is, if you think of it as an emergency sump pump that's put in over there, and it travels almost the same path to the same outfall location. And that pump only kicks on when that area is inundated, where it gets to the, I have a different phrase for it, but the, the oh-no level, where public work should be called to put in emergency pumps, to pump the neighborhood down before we lost structures and homes and things like that. And that water, when we did the emergency pumping, would pump it into the I dot storm system, which took the same path and ended up at the same place, which is the McDonald, Camp McDonald tributary right there. So the same water is going to the same place, the countryside process is only making it automated when we get into those oh-no levels that the residents over there aren't inundated and their, their homes aren't flooded out. So same water, same direction, just when gravity isn't doing enough, we just get them below that level. So that area isn't going to be pumped dry. There's still going to have water in the yard, still water in the ditches, but at that magical point where we don't want it to rise past, that's where the pumps will kick in. So, and the impact is, it's the same water. It just keeps it just below that area where we start losing things. The culvert pipes, I was in some other discussions on this with Cook County and MWRD. The existing culvert pipes that go between the lake and the slough are active right now. There's a lot of silt in them, yes, but they're currently active. And we see that every time we get a big event where this lake and the slough rise and eventually they touch. So we know that they're passing water through, they've been checked out, there's a lot in there. When the new pipes go in, they're still gonna, water's still gonna rise to that same level and touch. The lake is fed from the north, mostly as overflow from Lake Arlington and comes through a tributary, and then charges the lake on the north, along with the other inlets from the neighborhood. The slough area is water from the west. By putting the upstream detention in, or the compensatory storage, we're assisting so the lake isn't being hit as hard from both directions. That area up by the church already ponds, and we've all seen it, when there's bigger events, it ponds through there. It will still pond, but we're going to give it more space to pond. The water level won't be any higher than it is now, but where there's turf grass right now, it'll be lower. So we'll have more capacity, and then with some of the different plantings and stuff, it'll absorb faster. So it's a good spot, and as Dan said, when you do the math, it seems like we have a lot more compensatory storage than we need. We'll never have enough. I, I've been pushing, make it a little bit bigger. If we can do it and we can benefit the whole community, add more storage. So, so it has been talked about by the silt and things like that, and the lake is shallow, the slough is shallow, but they have been acting as one body of water, just we don't see it because the pipes are on the ground. And they do have silt in them, but as we've seen during the events, it rises at pretty much the same rate. We can have a big event that hits more on the south or west part of town, or the Lake Arlington area, the countryside, but the lake, the lake magically evens itself out, and once this project is done, we're going to have the storage, we're still going to have flooding in town. We're still going to have backyards and, and folks are still going to eventually, you know, some folks have just the property that are in a low end or in a bowl, that, that just are, they get hammered once in a while. This is going to increase the amount of detention we have. We're hoping it helps out a lot of those folks and it keeps the road open, because we all seen what the damage that can happen when that occurs. And the, the loading of the road, as Dan said, it's gonna, they're gonna try to keep it open, but as we know during construction, construction is painful. Even if we're doing a resurfacing or a sewer pipe or anything, there's, there's some pain to it, but in the end, I, I'm thrilled because we're going to have a little bit better parking along there, we're going to have a safer area for residents to walk around the lake with the overpass where the guardrails are, there'll be a paved area to walk. We have a lot of residents that love hanging out by the lake, and this is going to improve that whole thing and make it safer. So I hope that kind of helps, I kind of elaborated a little bit, but, but there's a lot of parts that are trying to get lined up to make this work for everyone. Welcome.
All right, thank you, Mark. Does anyone else wish to speak this evening? Thank you, everyone, to part this conversation. Thank you, Mr. Strahan, for clarifying some of this, we appreciate that. Moving on, item seven, we do not have a consent agenda this evening. Old business, we have a request by Police Chief William Cap Negro for council authorization to merge the police records supervisor and policy, I'm sorry, police administration coordinator position duties into one position titled police administrative director. Chief, if you would like to expand on this, if you would?
Yes. Because of our records manager who has managed to streamline our, our records, we're compliant on record destruction, juvenile destruction, we've, we're going to be on full-service DACRA, which alone is going to save about twenty-five hours, twenty-five man-hours a month because of her background also and finance. I, I just believe it's a, I don't think it could have been done in previous years, but the dynamics, how it's being run right now, myself, Deputy Chief Neil Dermott, are fully confident that she can handle it. I think it's going to save the city some money. It's, she's up for the challenge. Not only has she excelled, but so has some of our full-time records clerks because of the knowledge she's shared with them. So I have, you know, obviously, if it, if it fails, it would come back to me, but it's not going to fail. So I'm a hundred percent confident that it's a good move, and we're all looking forward to it.
All right, any cost-saving measures are always something that we like to see. Does anyone have any questions for the police chief regarding this?
I do. When would this, when would this position start?
May first, new fiscal year, yes.
Anyone else? Then could I have a motion to approve the request by the police chief, Captain Negro?
So moved, Morgan Adams.
Second, Cameron.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion or any other questions for the police chief? There being none, could I have a roll call, please?
Aldman Cameron?
Aye.
Aldman Lovickson?
Aye.
Aldman Dash?
Aye.
Aldman Morgan Adams?
Aye.
Mayor Dolik?
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Item eight B, staff memo and ordinance amending title one of the city code and adopting a pay plan, compensation of officers, employee salaries and pay plan. This is a second reading. Joe, did you want to expand on this?
Sure, it's, council's very familiar with it. It's, we do it, it corresponds with the budget. It essentially provides for a council action authorizing the number of positions and pay compensation and so on and so forth.
All right, could I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? There being none, could I have a roll call, please?
Aldman Morgan Adams?
Aye.
Aldman Cameron?
Aye.
Aldman Lovickson?
Aye.
Aldman Dash?
Aye.
Mayor Dolik?
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Item eight C, staff memo and ordinance adopting the fiscal year 2023-24 budget for the city
year 2023-24 budget for the city of Prospect Heights. This is a second reading. Could I start with a motion to approve?
So moved, Morgan Adams.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Before I open it up to a discussion, I did want to thank everyone involved in this. This is a long, demanding process to go through the budget each year. The department heads, our finance department, Joe, Peter, many people involved in this. And I know it's a lot of work, and I just want to thank all of you for putting in that time. All of the department heads put in a lot of their time, time trying to work with a very limited budget and make the best of it. So we do appreciate that. I wanted to make that comment. We do have a motion and a second, so I would open it up to any further discussion. There being none, could I have a roll call, please?
Aldman Dash?
Aye.
Aldman Morgan Adams?
Aye.
Aldman Cameron?
Aye.
Aldman Lovickson?
Aye.
Mayor Dolick?
Aye. Motion passes five zero. There is no new business. Staffing elected official reports. We do have the March financial report by Financial Officer Nate Giacalone. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. A copy of the financial report for the 11 months ending on March 31st was included in your agenda. At this point in reviewing, we're in line with our expenditures and revenues. There's really no surprises in this one. We've always tried to keep in line. Something that the finance department is working on right now is that we're working on the, our audit prep for the upcoming audit. So we'll be busy doing that for the next four weeks. But if there's any questions regarding the financial report or any questions at all regarding the finance department, I'd be happy to answer them at this point.
Thank you, Nate. Does anyone have any questions? Thank you very much for your report, sir. Moving on, do any of the elected officials have anything to report this evening? And I'll move on to any staff reports. There being none, that brings us to the approval of warrants. Deputy Clerk Schulteis.
Thank you. The total's $166,380.46. The April 7th, 2023 payroll is $169,951.26 for a total warrant of $336,331.72.
All right. Thank you. Could I have a motion to approve as presented?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any discussions on any of the warrants presented this evening? There being none, could I have a roll call, please?
Aldman Lovickson?
Aye.
Aldman Cameron?
Aye.
Aldman Dash?
Aye.
Aldman Morgan Adams?
Aye.
Mayor Dolick?
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Brings us to public comment on non-agenda matters. Has anyone registered, or does anyone wish to speak? There being none. We have no executive session this evening, so that brings us to adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone. Have a wonderful evening.